Okay, you're alive. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce, thank you all so much for tuning into our third and final 2021 candidate forum. This evening, we're happy to host the four candidates seeking two seats on the Pierce Township Board of Trustees. My name is Andrew McAfee, and I am the Director of Government Affairs here at the Chamber, and joined tonight by my colleague Heather Frye, who is the Director of Development here in the Chamber.
Good evening, everyone.
We're also pleased to be partnering tonight with the Claremont Sun, and with us tonight is Brett Mylum, the editor of the Claremont Sun. Brett, do you have anything you'd like to say as we kick things off?
Good evening, and thank you to the candidates for joining us tonight. I know since I came to the Claremont Sun in 2017, Pierce Township has always been one of the most interesting places to cover, and it's only gotten more interesting to watch here, so I think this would be very important.
Excellent point, Brett. The mission here at the Chamber is simple: To transform Claremont County to one of the world's preferred places to locate, operate, and grow a successful business. In order to achieve this, it is vital that our almost 700 business members and their thousands of employees know where their current and prospective elected officials stand on issues impacting our community. That is why we're here today: To educate and inform our members and the community about where these candidates stand on important issues and what plans they have on improving our community. Hold on one second.
What we love with technology is it works when it works.
Sorry, we got a message that said someone else had logged in, and that we were being kicked out of Zoom, but it still says we are live, so. Okay, sorry about that. Technology today, it got a little bit. So the rules tonight are pretty simple. Each candidate will give two-minute opening statements. Selection of the order of presentation will be alphabetical by last name. Questions have been solicited from the community and Chamber members in advance, and will be directed to specific candidates. Some questions will be asked of all candidates. Candidates have two minutes to answer each question. There'll be a 30-second rebuttal time available if a specific question, a specific candidate is mentioned in a response. Before a candidate has provided his or her answer to a specific question, the remaining candidates may request the opportunity to address the same question and be given one minute to do so. Moderators tonight will have the responsibility of enforcing the ground rules, maintaining order, and keeping the discussion focused on the current election issues. Heather will be our timekeeper. She will hold up a red folder when a candidate has half a his or her time left, and a blue folder when a candidate has 15 seconds left. At the end of the forum, each candidate will be given two minutes to provide a closing statement in reverse alphabet order. So with that, we will start with opening statements. Renee?
All right. Thank you for the Chamber and the Claremont Sun for hosting tonight. My platform consists of this: Proven leadership, including being elected twice to Amelia Village Council and being elected mayor in 2019. Since that time, I've continued to work for the residents of Pierce Township, trusted in the community as someone who can get things done. As a veteran, I have steadfast values and integrity. I support our first responders, making sure that the workplace and the duty to the community is a priority by both Pierce Police Department and the Fire Department. Bring excitement and family-oriented features to all the parks in Pierce Township. Roadways will continue to be a priority and will continue to work with the great Road Service Department of Pierce. Responsible spending for our community, bringing new business to the area with the community in mind. I want to represent you. I am a resident with you and respect your wants and needs. I have always said I'm not a politician, so I guess by running, by default, I am a politician. I am just like you. I am a resident that wants to get things done. I'm very passionate about issues, and I will never rubber stamp, and I want complete transparency and openness with the residents.
Dr. Cabello?
Thank you. I'd like to give you, viewers, a little bit of a thumbnail sketch of my background. I'll make a few comments about my very, very simple platform at the end of my closing report. So, tell you a little bit about my early life. I'm originally from Mayesville, Kentucky. I was born to immigrant, legal immigrant parents, who came over to, from Europe, to opportunities for themselves and their future family. My folks came over here penniless, but they came over here with a desire to succeed and work harder, pass those values on to me and to my brother. And I worked my tail off since I was 12 years old. I started cutting lawns in the neighborhood and did a handy odd job delivering the Cincinnati Post. Invested everything I earned, consistent with my dad's advice, and when I was a senior in high school, I paid $10,500 cash for a brand-new car back in 1985. That was a lot of money, and it was all part of burn, consistent with how we would talk to burner of our money. I graduated out of Victorian out of my high school. I went up to University of Kentucky, then University of Louisville for medical school, came up through Cincinnati for my residency in internal medicine, and I've been in practices of internal medicine specialists for 26 years, 20 to 21 of those in private practice. And I'm the chief cook and bottle, I share the office, I'm the doctor that sees the patients. I'm the handyman, I fix things that make them broken, I'm the pension plan administrator, HR, et cetera. Now, I'm also statewide medical director for a large health plan in Ohio. My leadership experience is pretty broad, and I brought a little bit of a list. I'll get to as many of these things as I can. I'm on the Board of Trustees, a tenured member of SPCA Cincinnati, I'm a parish council president, Academy of Medicine Cincinnati president, Academy of Medicine Foundation Board, Buffalo Trace Tax District Board, Northern Kentucky Independent Health District Board of Trustees, Cincinnati State Board of Trustees, the Republican Party Central Committee, and I'm a volunteer assistant professor of clinical medicine at UC. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so again, I want to kind of echo what everybody else said. I thank the Chamber and Claremont Sun for putting all the effort into put this on this evening. My name is Nick Kelly. I grew up in Anderson Township. I was son of a small business owner, grew up working in the family business doing roofing during the summers when I was in school. That was a hot job, very difficult. Like Pete said, I had to earn the dollars that I made in that job. But it taught me a lot about perseverance, to sticking with something that's not easy. You know, we had to push through that and learn to deal with a situation that was less desirable. I graduated from McNIC and ultimately from NKU with a degree in Operations Management. I worked my way through college when I, you know, would work at FedEx loading packages after going to school all day, and I would go in there and load packages in the evenings. I did that through school, and then when I graduated, I ended up going full-time with them. It was a great opportunity, really a great company to work for, taught me a lot about leadership, and I was able to use it in a very hands-on way and apply it, managing people and dealing with that. You know, at that, at that time, which was great, but ultimately I decided to come back and work with the family business, which is what I do now. Owner-operator of a small business roofing company. And how I got to be a trustee, I kind of got involved in the neighborhood watch thing over in the Still Meadow area, and ultimately kind of morphed into me becoming the HOA president. They asked me to do that. I was younger and probably dumb enough to do it. On a very, you know, pretty dankless job, but I started coming to township meetings during that time and getting involved in some stuff going on in Pierce Township, and so I'm an opportunity for me to leverage my skill set to help what I thought helped township, so I ultimately decided to run for trustee. And I did, and you know, folks were kind enough to elect me, and so I'm going on four years now with that, and really appreciate the opportunity to be here and be part of this forum, so thank you very much.
Linda?
Again, thank you, the Chamber and also the Claremont Sun for being here. I've always been a strong advocate throughout my life, organizing my children's activities, to working with my customers on behalf of them in the banking world. I've lived in Claremont County for over 40 years, and the last year I've been in Pierce Township, but when my husband and I moved to Pierce Township, it was basically moving back to where my families began. My grandfather moved to Pierce Township in the early 1900s off the 10 Mile Road, started the dairy called Claremont Springs Dairy, where they delivered milk, bottled it, pasteurized it, things like that. That, they sold that to my uncle and my dad, then moved to Florida. My parents sold it probably in the late 1970s. But anyway, so I came, when I came back to Pierce Township, it was like I'm home where my family had started. I've been asked what my platform is, and I basically don't think of it as my platform. I think of it as community platform. Basically, I want to make sure that we have a safe community for all of us who've lived here more here, where our firemen and police need to have equipment that is up to date and functioning properly to protect us. We want to make sure that the environment is safe, our old Becture plant and its surrounding areas is the concern of mine. From the groundwater to the coal ash, we want to make sure that all the government programs are being utilized to help pay for that cleanup. This bridge should not be on us. I believe it should be on, put in there. We want to look at ways to bring in revenue into our community. I travel all over the country, and there's a lot of towns that are doing very well and some that are not. I'd like to find out how they're doing it and learn from that point. Also, I feel that we want to make sure that our community is also cohesive. During the last election, we were two separate communities. We're now one. I feel that's like a marriage. We want to make sure that we work all well together. I feel that's what I bring to the community, a new set of eyes and ears to the community, and that's where I feel what my strong points are. I also love to research. I will research things out to no end. So I think that brings, I am retired, so I have 100%, I don't, this would be my commitment full-time, and that's what I, I want to do. Thank you.
So our first question is going to be a group question, and for this, we'll start with you, Pete. There's been a lot of discussion over how both Pierce and Batavia Townships have managed the dissolution of the village of Amelia. Name one thing that Pierce Township did right, and one thing, one thing do you think the township should improve on?
Okay, well, the voters made that election to dissolve their village. That was their right, and I think Pierce Township took it upon themselves to invest in that assimilation early on with the contribution of resources, staff and otherwise, to see that transition through. So I think they were invested early on in a positive way, had a positive outlook. What could have been done a little bit differently? You know, truthfully, if we had unlimited resources, unlimited staff, which we don't have, nobody does nowadays. You know, this process could have been moved along a little bit more quickly, and you know, several loose ends could have been tied up earlier on, but you know, with what we had with which to work, you know, I think the township staff, the leadership, the trustees, Nick Allen and Mrs. Bachelor, I think they did an outstanding job in trying to get that process rolling and going in the right direction.
Excellent. Nick?
Well, yeah, so I think that, so initially when it happened, it was new ground, right? I mean, no township, no village has ever dissolved into two townships in the state of Ohio. It's all in one, but not two. So it added this whole exponentially more difficult element to what happened at that time. I feel like Pierce Township hit the ground running. We had a plan. We had it laid out. We knew how to pay off the debt. We kind of knew that we wanted to get rid of the income tax and vote on that fairly quickly, but the ranch was kind of thrown in, and we didn't start dealing with the state and that kind of thing. So, you know, for me, I think as a township, we've dealt with it very well. I think that we've handled it to the best of our ability within the framework in which we have to operate. Albeit slow, you know, slower than many would like, slower than I would like, because you know, I'm a, I'm a small business guy. If I have, you know, something I want to change within the business, I can do it fairly quickly. We're pretty nimble. I can make a decision. I want to make this change. There's no real other avenues I have to go through. Done, you know, we're moving on. But with dissolution, I learned very quickly, and again, over the last two years here, it's been a learning process for me too, that in governments, unfortunately, that doesn't always happen that way. So I don't have a whole lot of time left. There's, there's a lot of detail to this situation. What we could have done better, I'll get to that quickly, and I think we need to continue to solicit feedback. I think it's easy to get your blinders on when you move through a process and move further into that process, and you need to kind of force yourself to continually get input from the community to make sure that you're on the right path.
Excuse me. Could you repeat the question again, please?
There's been a lot of discussion over how both Pierce and Batavia Townships have managed the dissolution of the village of Amelia. Name one thing that Pierce Township did right, and one thing that you think the township could improve on?
Obviously, when I moved into the community, it had already been, been dissolved, but I did work in the community when it was Amelia and then it was, you know, when it was Pierce Township. So what I think it did right is it didn't seem, at least in my perspective, to stop development in our area. I mean, probably some of those were being done prior to the dissolvment, but it didn't stop. And there's new development coming in too with the restaurant and things like that. So I think that's good. I think that it's very difficult. When I've read is that this, like you said, it's the largest village, one that's never been split between two townships before in the state of Ohio, because I have done research and tried to understand what happened. So I think that was new to both the community itself and the state, so I think it has gone slower than wanted. Again, working, you know, with government and like my sons were in the military, you know, things take a little bit longer than I think we want, that we expected them to take, because we wanted us to do it right away. So I think that would be, the improvement would be, you know, that it didn't go as fast as we would like it to, but it's been going in a positive direction. But I think also the improvement needs to be in, in the cohesiveness of the community itself. I think that's what I bring to it, that I've worked in those areas, I've lived in different areas, so I don't have any agenda except to make sure the community is positive and going in the, in the right direction.
Renee?
Well, I didn't have to research it. I lived it. You know, I think from a residence standpoint, which is what I've always discussed by, not by the political part, that Amelia felt kind of disconnected because we had no, no real leadership. We were told we were still a village, and we were told we were Pierce residents and Batavia residents, but nobody took the lead for us to fight for us at the state level. And I don't think, you know, with this being split between two, the state gave no guidance to the trustees on either side, and I think this is not a Pierce problem or a Batavia problem. It's a state problem, and it's something that I continue to fight for this day, trying to get legislation changed, so this doesn't happen again. And to try to find out the root cause of why it happened and why it's happening again in Owensville, and when it's going to happen again to another village. You know, the trustees can only work with what they have. And I, it was just a mess from the get-go, and a lot of people don't realize the village is still not dissolved. Those people are still getting paid. The mayor still gets paid. The council still gets paid. It's not gone away. And everybody talks like it's gone. It's not gone. And, you know, nobody's gotten their money. All the bills have been paid. There's been no council meeting, and these individuals are still getting paid. They haven't met in three months. So where is our trustees fighting for their residents that we are, the Amelia part? Where are they fighting for us with the state?
Thank you. Nick, this next question is for you, and it comes from a Chamber member. Part of your platform includes what you call reasonable development. What does that look like to you, and what role do you think the government should play in economic development?
It's a good question. So to me, reasonable development is pretty situational. I mean, it depends a lot on the area, topography, kind of what you have at your disposal as a township, that kind of thing. What role I think government should play in that? I think that's another good question. It should be, you know, limited, but enough to guide development in a way that's reflective of kind of what the vision is for the township. So that's one thing that we're working on right now, is kind of, you know, redoing or updating our land use plan to an extent. It's a little updated. It's been done in 2015. But that plan is kind of the basis in which, you know, zoning can, decisions can be made moving forward. So you kind of lay it out. What areas do you want to see? What, what topography is more, you know, essential, and what, what, where, where do we want to see commercial? Where do we want to keep development from happening? Maybe hillsides, things like that. You kind of use that to kind of guide your view of the township moving forward into the future. So I think it's very important to have policies and procedures and frameworks in which to operate that are reflective of what people in the community, kind of what, what we, what we want to see, and what's going to, you know, add value to us as a community and not track it. So I don't want, you know, I'm not a big one on giving a bunch of density to developers, not getting much return. I really want to make sure we're mindful, because land is a precious resource. It's finite. And make sure we're mindful of what kind of, you know, decisions we make, particularly as trustees. Trustees play a big role in that moving forward, and make sure that we guide the township in a good direction.
Thank you.
My turn. My question is for Linda. This one came from a community member. Given your experience in banking and financial services, how will your background impact your decision-making if elected to the board?
Well, I think having experience in banking helps in making sound fiscal decisions, because I know checks and balances. You don't want to be overdrawn, you know, so you have, I'm, I was a manager also. So you have, I'm used to working with budgets and things like that. So I think it will help immensely in helping the community make sure it's staying fiscally responsible.
Next question is for you, Renee, and this came from a Chamber member. The dissolution of Amelia is very important to you, but what are three other of your top priorities you hope to accomplish if elected?
I want to get the community more involved. I always said, you know, when you sit up as a council member or a trustee member, you're doing things right when the, when the room is empty. You know, you're doing stuff wrong when the chamber is full. I want to be more open and honest with residents, more discussion out loud than behind the scenes. If you include the residents, they're going to be more involved. It's when you don't hear about things till stuff is done that is the problem, and they lose trust, and then that's when they show up to meetings. You want them to show up to gain their perspective, their wants, their needs, what they want to see. That's what we're, we're elected to do, to represent them, not what we want to see and what my priority is, but what the community's priority is. I would like to maintain green space in, you know, the Amelia part. There's great places for business, but there's also great green space there. That I want there to be a community gathering place that's not on one side of Pierce or the other side of Pierce, where everybody can, can come to meet as a family, concerts in the parks, movies in the parks, truck rallies, food truck rallies. You know, stuff that'll bring the community together so you can meet residents from the whole Pierce Township.
Pete, this next question is for you, and it's also a community question. You've been on the Board of Trustees now for about 10 months. What would you say has been the most challenging part of your job?
That's easy. It's truthfully maintaining a positive and proactive attitude when repeatedly subjected to ambiguous, unnecessary, unfounded assaults and accusations by folks that support one of my opponents, folks that don't know me, didn't take the time to know me, but nevertheless, because they didn't have, did not see their candidate being appointed in the seat in which I sit today, assigning various negative descriptors to me, very personal remarks, emails. I have two in my email inbox from last week accusing me of being a plagiarist. Initially, one of my mailers, I've been accused, I've been informed that I should quote, it's a quote, direct quote, "Stay in my lane" as a healthcare provider. That's only the tip of the iceberg, but nevertheless, it is my responsibility to represent each and every one of this community. And when I'm, I hope I'm re-elected to this position, I will do so regardless of the assaults and insults to which I've been subject. That has been the most difficult part of serving in this role to date. Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is a group question. All right, and we're going to start with Linda. Pierce Township recently paid out, and this one came from a community, a community member. Pierce Township recently paid out $11,500 in a settlement for violating the Ohio Sunshine Act. Do you believe the Board of Trustees need to be more open and transparent?
I have heard about this, someone that was paid out, and I, and I do know what the sunshine rule is. I do think that the board should be open and transparent. I'm not sure, since I again wasn't there, what happened in that situation. I've heard that it was an innocent mistake. We all make mistakes, so I'm not going to blame anybody. I definitely think, you know, that the board should be open and, you know, open to all the community. That's how you get the information from the community. It's not necessarily always knocking doors. It's, you know, talking to people. Like I, my nail's done today, so I was talking to someone that was there, and she was asking me questions and things like that. So, you know, I'm, again, I have the time to do that. I have the time to go places. I want to. That's why, like, this retirement thing was like, okay, I'm ready to go back to doing something that's worthwhile at this point, so, in my life. So yes, I do think it should be open.
So I don't think that if violating the rules was, no one does it intentionally. You have to know what those rules are to follow them, and there were three trustees, two of which have been trustees for a long time, that should have known those rules were being broken and should have stopped the meeting at that point. You know, the, the meeting that, that is in question was the meeting to appoint Mr. Cabello. So, you know, I think possibly the rush to get that done before Ms. Bachelor went away was part of the problem, and if time would have been taken to slowly do the process instead of rushing through the process, I think things could have been done in a more open and complete forum. I, I do not blame anyone. That's part of the game. And unfortunately, it, it was a costly mistake, so.
Pete, would you mind re-stating the question?
Oh, no problem. Pierce Township recently paid out $11,500 in a settlement for violating the Ohio Sunshine Act. Do you believe the Board of Trustees needs to be more open and transparent?
Another easy question. The Board of Trustees is open and transparent, hands down. So the matter in question was a simple procedural error, and there was without question no malice or mal intent in that, in making that error. So I, I don't think that's a, a topic that's in debate. The, the trustees conduct, did and do conduct themselves in an open and transparent process, and that process will continue.
Nick? So yeah, so when we started the process to, you know, Bonnie went on to be, you know, county commissioner, we knew we had to get somebody to fill that spot, started the process, and this was actually also an open meeting where we discussed how we were going to solicit and get, you know, applications for whoever's going to take that spot. You know, I stated in that public meeting that I thought the process should be as exhaustive as possible. You know, I quoted, I don't know, 100% paraphrasing Plato, where you don't want, you know, the person you want to lead isn't really the person that you want leading, right? The person that comes out and sticks their neck out, oh, I want to be in charge of everything. So let's make sure that we solicit as much feedback as we can and we get the right person for this job. We have 14 candidates. We went through three sets of interviews. I spent multiple eight-hour days, you know, interviewing people, phone, in person, and otherwise, and ultimately came to that decision at a meeting. Now, the meeting was not posted as it should have been in regards to what we were actually, action we were going to take during that meeting, and it was, it was a technical error, but I'm not going to let it, you know, keep me from being proud of what we've done with, in Pierce Township as far as being transparent. I mean, as soon as COVID hit, we moved immediately to Zoom meetings in Pierce Township. We didn't have to do that. The state of Ohio said, oh, you can just broadcast a meeting. You don't need two-way interaction with residents and citizens. But we moved immediately, make sure that we maintain that two-way interaction right, right upon the cusp of that, as it happened, a lot of communities to help do that. So I just feel like we've gone out, we had a meeting recently in one of the parks around Pierce Township, and we've really gone out of our way to solicit feedback from, from the residents and be as transparent and welcoming and inclusive as possible.
Excellent. Thank you. We're going to do another group question. This came from a Chamber member, so this one, we'll start with you, Renee. What do you think about the increase in the use of economic development tools like TIPS and JETS? Do you support or oppose the use of these tools?
I do not oppose them. I think that we need to be cautious about our TIPS. One of the things that I've brought up is tips in residential areas. You're taking away money from the schools. Residential areas are where the kids live. Residential areas are drawn in the numbers to the Residential areas are drawn in the numbers to the school. As I mentioned before, you know, when you tip that area, depending on the amount of the tip, that's dollars that do not go to the schools. I would rather tip businesses and give the incentive to bring businesses to the community. Right now, I don't think we've got businesses knocking down the door. So to give, you know, tax credits to businesses that do want to come, I think those are great incentives for businesses to come. So, you know, I'd like to see less housing developments tipped and, you know, more business-wise to bring that in.
Yeah. Pete?
So, you know, in a select development, you know, I do support the concept of a tip, but it's got to be right for Pierce Township, it has to fit in with the overall Pierce Township plan. And as I've said, you know, many times, it has to fit in with Pierce Township's natural beauty. So I do support, generally speaking, TIPS for appropriate developments. JETS, in commercial strip zones, commercialized areas, there's obviously an increased need for police, fire, EMS, road services, et cetera. So those are high-usage districts, and I'm not opposed to the select application of JETS, of the JETS concept in those highly commercialized districts.
Thank you. So yeah, I would be opposed to any of those in the right situation, particularly in access. But when used in moderation, I could feel like they can be good tools to benefit the community. So a tip, for instance, would be, you know, tax increment and financing, which, you know, the key word there is the incremental increase in value on a property above a certain amount, above its base value. So if I have a property, for simplicity, that's worth $100,000, and I have a developer that wants to come and develop that and make it worth $1 million, the part that's given the tip is the $900,000, the part in between. So that, that money can be used to improve areas around that area, improve roads, provide infrastructure, put sidewalks in, and things like that that benefit that area. So it can be a good win-win tool for everybody involved. Again, in access, I would have to, you know, be considering how much of that we should do, but we don't do it in access in Pierce Township. I believe Presswood Place is the only place currently that we have a residential tip. We have some commercial tips that, most of which were established before my time, and some of which we're closing out and using that money to improve, you know, other things with the township. So I think it's a tool that can be used to help spur development and help create a win-win for everybody in the township, but only when it's used by. Thank you. And then?
Okay, so, Purnine County, like you said, is one of his land, which a lot of developers want to come in. So that's a good thing. Usually brings up tax rate. Pierce Township is a community that has a lot of good, nice green space, too. We want to keep that intact. So, but there is areas now that can be developed on the 125 corridor. So my opinion about tip is that I would like to look at it as what that property is paying now versus what it would get paid in tax money after a tip was. If it's going to be more money coming to the township and the county versus what it's getting now, just my gut feeling is that usually is a good idea. Do I want it to be all the time? No, because I don't want it to be like a Colored Avenue or, you know, I grew up in Anderson, too, you know, like non-stop Beachfront Avenue. I mean, it's improved in a lot of areas. So I, so I think that it's not a bad thing, but I think each individual case has to be looked at to make sure that the community itself is getting a benefit to it and also the county itself is getting a benefit to.
Thanks, thank you. Pete, this next question is for you, and it's also from a chamber member. The board recently gave a proclamation to Purnine County Prosecutor for his role with improving St. Andrews on the Green Apartment Complex. How important are relationships with other community stakeholders and how will you work to improve them?
Well, it's a perfect example of how important those relationships are. In engaging our prosecutor, I think we came up with a situation that's far better than where we were six, eight, 12 months ago. So, you know, it's critically important to engage with, you know, multiple members of the Pierce Township House, whether that's leadership at the county level, leadership at the state level, leadership at the school board level, or, and inclusive of, excuse me, leadership on the other side of the border, Hamilton County. You know, Anderson Township and Pierce Township are, you know, very closely related. The demographics are very similar in many respects, and our wants and needs are very similar in many respects. So I see that as important to maintain and grow and, you know, obviously make myself available to be a part of that process as a trustee.
Okay, the next question is for Nick. This was a community question. The site where premier healthcare was set to open a new nursing home, bite the ice. What is the current status of the project and is there anything the board can do to improve on the site?
So I think the current status of the project is, it's my understanding, it's went to receivership. So there's some legal issues with the previous owner. The property is went to receivership. There are also some legal issues that still involve the old village of Amelia in regards to any civil or essentially bonds were issued in order to pay for green improvements upon that property. Those bonds still need to be paid back. So there's still money, a financial burden that the owner may have to take on if they were to buy that property. So I think that there have been some people interested in buying a property. My thought would be, more than likely, it would be best suited for somebody, and from a financial perspective, to use it somewhere within the realm in which it was originally intended to be used. I can leverage the current infrastructure and continue to build on that site. So I hope the proper suitor comes in to kind of leverage that and continue the project along the way. But there has been some legal hurdles that we've had to kind of get past over time. But I think, you know, the Stonehouse Restaurant that we have coming to the township is out in front of there. The residential development that's right next to it is a house, like hotcakes, as far as I understand it. The prices of them had to increase because the demand's been so high. So I think the area is definitely, you know, it's, it's, it has a lot of utility, and I think it will continue to develop out, but that is a piece that we need to, you know, go figure. Thank you. Next question is for you, Linda. This also was submitted by a community member. You've stated that the township needs to seek input from residents to become, quote, "all-encompassing in determining the community's needs." If elected, how would you accomplish this?
I think being out in the community and meeting up with people is a really good way. I'm one to always, I think, draw conversations with people, it seems like. So I feel like, you know, when you're out in the community doing that and listening, that that's a good way to do it. I have worked in the community itself, so I'm familiar with a lot of people already. I mean, just using the people that I know to utilize me getting out more and talking to them to try to bring them all together from both the spectrum of, you know, the old Pierce Township and now the new part of community and bringing it to that point.
Thank you.
All right, the next question is for Renee. This is a community question. You led the campaign, I apologize. You led the campaign to dissolve the Village of Amelia. But running a campaign is very different than government. What did that experience teach you that you can bring to the Board of Trustees if elected?
Can you read the very first line again?
You led the campaign to dissolve the Village of Amelia.
Okay. So I did not lead the campaign to dissolve Amelia. I did present the first petitions that were not legally taken by the council and the mayor. So there's a, there's a difference with legal, that the dissolution process was petitioned and done by a group called Free Amelia. I, at the time, was running for mayor and then changed my, I guess, opinion of the dissolution because I can't run to be a mayor if I wanted to dissolve the village. Did my mind change? Maybe, maybe not. I did not vote to dissolve the village, but my goal changed. My goal was to make a difference, get the elected officials out, and try to save Amelia. Unfortunately, the damage was done by the people that were in office, and it couldn't be fixed. I thought that I would be able to do that in the dissolution process, which we were told by the state we were going to be able to do. Myself and the two candidates who won council seats and me as mayor, we're going to do the finishing up. That's what we were told by the state. Then the state, six months in, like Nick was talking about, changed their mind on how everything was going to be run. And the council and the mayor stayed on a court decision made by Judge Brock. I govern, I've been a council member. I don't think if people didn't believe what I had to offer, I wouldn't have been voted in as mayor. I think the trust for my community is there, and I will continue to maintain that trust with them.
This next question is a group question that also comes from a member of the community. In April, a smokestack toppled into the Ohio River during demolition of the now-retired Beck George Polk Land. Clean-up finally began in September. What role do you think the township should play in the cleanup? And what is your plan and share of those? And we will start with Nick.
So yeah, I'm aware of that incident, where, you know, the smokestack didn't topple the way they wanted it to, and some of it ended up in the river. I assume that there's some, you know, residue and things on the inside of the smokestack for years of operation that aren't good, they have in the river. That was not something that we were happy with in the township. Ultimately, a lot of that stuff does fall on Ohio EPA, so they're really responsible for overseeing a lot of environmental aspects of that project. But we did take an active role in kind of wanting to look into that further. I know our fire chief, Craig, pushed them quite a bit to come up with a plan on when they were going to clean it up, et cetera. There was an issue where, you know, one of their little buildings caught on fire on top of one of those facilities, you know, six months to a year probably prior to that. Similar type of thing, right? I actually went down and on-site with the fire chief, Craig, and kind of questioned him on what happened, just to kind of be there to support him, et cetera. You know, it's a fire investigation, there's a fire over there. So I think ultimately, they have a plan, they're moving toward the plan to keep the place cleaned up. Ohio EPA probably has ultimate jurisdiction over making sure it's done in the appropriate ways as far from an environmental perspective. But we, as a township, want to be in the know, we want to be involved as much as we can and want to represent our residents, obviously, in the township. Thank you. Linda?
I'm concerned about the Beck George area because, first of all, my husband worked in a facility that he got leukemia from years ago. So I'm aware of, you know, what environmental things can do to individuals. I'm also aware of programs that are out there to help individuals that have things that have come from a site. It probably is not the same, though, as this site because this is, where he worked at was a government, he was a contract laborer for the Department of Defense, for the Department of Energy. So I think there's different agencies, I'm not sure of them all, I've read about a couple things, but because it was an older utility company, I think that goes into play. But I'm concerned about, obviously, what's in the ground, the groundwater. I had an uncle that worked there, and my family lived in Richmond, so environmental issues from there is very important. I've read about the ash that can be used for things like making cement and things like that. I think we need to work with the company that owns that property and work strongly with them and the EPA to make sure that there are being utilized to the way they can be utilized to properly clean up that area for the protection of people.
Thank you, Renee.
So I don't profess to know a lot about Beck George. I do know that Craig Wright, the buyer chief, has done a good job. I have seen, you know, his interviews on TV and what I've read in the paper, no offense, Brett, but I don't believe everything I can read or see just from personal knowledge. I think that Pierce needs to continue to be a force to make sure things are cleaned up and done right and make sure that whoever was responsible cleans it up.
Thank you. Pete?
Okay, so I have particular interest in Beck George because it's in my backyard. So I live very, very close to the power plant, and several of the ash pits are right up the hill from me, again, in my backyard. So I think the question in part asks, what's the role of the township in dealing with the Beck George cleanup? Two-fold, collaborative and communicative. This is not in Pierce Township's jurisdiction. The EPA, in fact, does have jurisdiction over the cleanup. Most recently, the Army Corps of Engineers was responsible in part, as engaged by the EPA for the cleanup of the smokestack that fell unfortunately in the wrong direction and some of the contents, some of the structure did in fact fall into the river. From what I understand in speaking with the representative from the Dayton EPA office, in fact, as early as today, is that that debris has been cleaned up, there's going to be further sonographic surveillance of the area forthcoming to make sure that that is all in fact out of the river. And I feel that, you know, once again, this is an absolutely critical issue to the, and the health and safety and welfare of the townships, including my very own family. Was that half an hour, half an hour left? Forgive me. But, you know, back to, you know, our role, once again, collaborative, collaborate with the stakeholders and communicate the results of our interactions with those stakeholders. I'm regularly in touch with the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Board. In fact, I spoke with a gentleman who I believe is a Pierce Township resident earlier today. So they are actively involved in the project, and once again, as is the EPA. So I'm comfortable with what they're doing, the efforts they're putting forth, and I look forward to collaborating further with those entities and explaining, you know, what is in fact, you know, going on on the ground to our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, believe it or not, we are done with questions.
I thought we had 100 more.
Yeah, unless you want to go for another hour.
100 more.
If you'd like, we've done another hour.
Yeah, we have questions.
Bring it on. So we'll move on to closing statements now for these meetings. We'll be given two minutes, and we will start with you, Linda.
I always like to kind of give examples to things on what I know. So I recently looked up, and there were two sayings done by two different Texas individuals. Albert Einstein said, "Only a like live for others, the like worthwhile." And then Muhammad Ali said, "Service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth." This kind of equates how I feel as to why I'm running for trustee. I've worked many years in the business world. I'm able, since I'm retired now, to give full effort, come a new set of eyes into my community, and that's what I want to do. I bring a perspective that looks deep into the topics of calm and rational manner in all sides. I believe there is too much animosity currently in our society and too many people leave in a blame game rather than trying to look for equitable solutions for us all in a common productive manner. Will everyone be happy with what we decide to do? Probably not, but because we are a community of diversity, that is good. But I promise to make and look at decisions thoroughly through what's best for the township. Our community is beautiful, we have rolling hills, a scenic river, but yet we are in close proximity to downtown Cincinnati. I've traveled all over the country and have seen many towns and townships that are doing really well in some of mine. So I want ours to be on the prospering side. And, you know, again, it's a beautiful community, it's my heritage, and I want to make sure that it stays that way. So I appreciate your support on November 2nd.
Nick? So yeah, again, thanks for putting this on for us, appreciate it, Chamber and Brad with the sun. So I think, look, I've enjoyed being a trustee over the last four years. You know, I think it's been a learning curve involved with that, but I've learned a lot about, you know, administration, police, fire, EMS, our service department, and what their needs are and kind of what their needs will be moving forward. Budgets, that kind of thing, and I feel like I'm in a unique position to, well, I have been able to use that knowledge, but to continue to use that knowledge to benefit Pierce Township. You know, we've accomplished a lot in the township over the last, you know, four years or so. We paved a lot of roads, done a lot of work down at the bottom of Bradbury. Worked with Rumkey to kind of clarify the contract and make sure residents are getting, provide the service that they pay for. We've done a lot of parks improvements thanks to a really great Parks Committee that we have within the township. So a lot of this stuff is happening, and it's happened without us having to reach our hand out to the taxpayer. You know, we've stayed very fiscally responsible in Pierce Township, and that was a big thing for me coming in, is to make sure we look at expenses, continue critique expenses, and continue to take in more money, at least slightly more than we spend. And it's money in, money out. You know, you have to be a CBA, but you got to know your budget. And I feel like that's a very important part of leading, a very important part of leadership at a kind of the ground level here when you look at a trustee. So I appreciate everybody's support and support last time and hopefully moving forward. We have a lot of initiatives going on with township, with our 125 corridor study. We've got good things happening, we've got Biggie Coffee, we got a restaurant coming, a nice formal sit-down restaurant coming in Pierce Township. And I would like a little bit more time to continue to pursue some of the initiatives that we already have around in the township. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you. The same. Pete?
So a lot of people have asked me why I want to remain as Pierce Township trustee. And that's a pretty straightforward answer. You know, what happens here matters to me and to my family. You know, what happens here matters to me and to my family. I wear a lot of hats, as you all have heard me explain, in, in my occupational and community involvement. I'm proud of my accomplishments. I've demonstrated good quality leadership in many disciplines. And I'll bring that to the board on a continued basis. I feel that I'm decisive. I'm obviously experienced and, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm a hard worker, you know, quite frankly. And I've demonstrated that over many, many years, starting at the age of 12. So my commitment to the residents of Pierce Township is going to be to deliver good quality services, basic, good quality service, fire, police, EMS, road crew, service department at a fiscally appropriate, on a fiscally appropriate basis. And I would appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve as township trustee for an additional four years. Thank you.
Renee?
So a lot of things have been said tonight. And I think a lot of that I bring is knowledge. Prior to Mr. Campbell's being appointed to the Pierce trustee spot, I'd never seen him at a meeting. Never. I've never seen Ms. Smith Miller at a meeting till she decided to run. And you can't run without knowledge and know what's going on. And I'd like to address another fact or another situation that Mr. Campbell's brought up, that people that support me are upset because I wasn't appointed, therefore they're attacking him. I don't, I don't control people. I, you know, what people do on their own, unless my name is attached to it or I sent it to you personally, I have no knowledge of what other people do. And that was the problem in Amelia. People were accusing people of doing stuff and that's not what I want. I want community effort. And if you're trying to be decisive or divisive up here, what are you going to do for me later? And I have a problem with that. And, you know, we've got a chance to bring two communities together. And the decisiveness is not with Amelia and Pierce Township. I don't know where that comes from. We just want to be represented. Amelia hasn't been represented in a long time. And I wanted to do that and that's why I was elected mayor. I have knowledge of things that go on and I've been to every meeting since we were designated in Pierce. Every meeting, Zoom or otherwise. So effectively, I would like to ask for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. And with that, we are out of time tonight. Thank you all for tuning in. Thank you to our candidates. We appreciate you taking the time this evening off the campaign trail to inform our members and the community about your values and opinions. We will be posting this video online by the end of the week, so others may do it later. Big thanks to the Claremont side for co-moderating with us this evening. Brett, any final thoughts?
I would just thank the candidates again. And Andrew joked about it earlier that we could go another hour. Maybe I'm just a nerd, but I would love that. Anyhow, thank you.
Bring it on.
After tonight, you will be able to view all three of our candidate forums on the chamber's YouTube account. They include the candidate running for Union Township trustee, Pierce Township trustee and the Claremont Municipal Court Clerk. Heather, any final thoughts?
Yes, thank you to, thank you to each and everyone that took time this evening to make their way to the chamber. So people, whether it's tonight, tomorrow, the next day, will be able to watch the videos and learn a little about you. But I do want to thank Brett. I want to thank Andrew. I know what, how, how much time they've put into making me successful and making sure that he has input from everywhere. So I've been here, I have to admit, Andrew was actually working. So I would say both of you, Brett and Andrew, thank you for also being here. Because again, it's not our place to pick sides. Our, our job here with the Pramak County Chamber of Commerce is to educate so we can have an informed voter when the time comes. So thank you guys once again. Purple. Purple. Our boy is the Ryan Evans shirt. There it is.
Thanks again, everyone. Have a good evening.